Thanks for joining the meeting. Okay, then we'll go to the next agenda.
Yeah, so we'll take the matters arising from the last meeting. So I'll just share, I'll share the documents for the minutes of meeting that we had from the last time. There we go. So that's, that's the meeting point. So I, this was shared with everyone. I asked for any comments. I think we not have any, any other comments. So I'll go, I'll go by point by point quite quickly because if ever there is anything, so we will take it as we move. So Dr. AP mentioned that we've got the ATG and the 12A. Dr. AP mentioned also to have GRF web TV programs for India team as well from 2023. We have discussed, we have started discussion with the team. I will wait for you next week, sir. When we are here, we can, we can have a plan and then we can, we can.
Very good.
IRISE 2023, I've already arranged with, with Pooja and I think Professor Post Raman has linked with, with a small team. We have noise. I think someone needs to. No, one of you has to mute.
I should mute.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's better. So I was mentioning that the AP, Dr. AP mentioned about the IRISE. I think he has already linked up. Pooja with someone back, back in India there.
This is in good, good place now, good.
Yeah. Pooja mentioned that to me this afternoon itself. Book release on Tamil migrants, book release to be, released done in 2023. Mr. Rajkumar and AP mentioned to have one for the index. I think this has been done as well. Holistic program done at UNESCO daily. AP will share details later on same. So we'll, we'll probably take that again on agenda because it's on agenda already. Master plan, work on same, just like we have done in Mauritius. We'll coordinate that from Mauritius next week as from next week, sir. Dr. Ishwar, you have to work and submit on list of relevant NGOs before next meeting. We'll take it because it's, it's on agenda as well. So the matters were approved and adopted. The next item was announcement by president, 12 ATG and 12 AA, FCRE contribution from members. I think we reported that above. Empower event at IIT MRP done, empower event done, collaboration IIT Madras, MOU sign in place. We said MOU with GRF Mauritius, that is also, no, sorry, report on activities at Salim Punducherry, Nama Kalendali. So Mr. Post Raman will speak about that next. The MOU, we've already said, website will have Mauritius team and India team to work together. Again, this is on agenda for, for next, next week. Future plan, MOU with Pavai College in process. We'll take that on board. IRISE India 2023, as mentioned, we already working on that. Holistic program by Dr. Sathapriya in progress. Yes, I'm also aware of that. Update our data from Ishwarya for next meeting. Maybe we'll have some details today. Partnership with NGOs, this is in development, Professor Post Raman mentioned. And then we have GRF social media challenge, Dylan to look into that. We did check with Dylan for the same. I mentioned that, but then, then we need to have a working plan. So again, we will, we'll look at that as of next week, which is on agenda as well. Government department liaison, Professor Post Raman mentioned meetings were held and follow-ups are needed now. We'll, we'll look at that as well. Fundraising, work in progress. We will have, we are supposed to have an update during this meeting. Administration, administration procedures about registering him as lifetime trustee. That update, Mr. Rashkumar mentioned that update from Mr. Prabhu is that we need to have a resolution. I think I have shared the resolution already, which is, which was attached within the email. So we'll go through that as well. The board had unanimously approved.
They unanimously passed that resolution by G.
Say again. We'll, we'll discuss the resolution later.
Yes, yes, the resolution is, it was a patch in the mail. So we will discuss that later.
No, no, we, we, that will be passed unanimously. We don't want to wait, sir, on the EP, sir.
I wanted to discuss that more, you know, let's take it later.
No, no, we will pass, we will pass the resolution as well.
No, I have, I, I tell you, we, we can, can we take it at the end?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Rajkumar, let me take it at the end.
Yes, sir. Sure, sir. Okay, sir.
Next, continue, Vijay.
Yeah, and we had other items during the meeting. We talked about SRM AST, MOU sign, collaboration order in place. Yes, we had a working, working session with Dr. Kartikayan. I will update that later on to the board as well.
Vijay, Dr. Kartikayan has joined us now.
Oh, yes. Welcome, Dr. Kartikayan. Doctor, if you mentioned to share the MOU sign within SRM GRF with board members before next meeting, I think I missed this one. I will share it in any case just after this meeting. Doctor, if you mentioned to add statement of account to be presented by Mr. Rajkumar, hopefully we will go through that as well. Book release, it will be in Jan 2023 after Pogal. I think this already happened.
Yes, yes.
SBI need to be contacted by and requested by the Baka to seek all the options about funding. Talk to corporates about funding. Doctor, if you mentioned to work on project writer based on approach, based, writer based to approach corporates. Dr. Kartikayan mentioned working on Telenet scene. Yes, this, as I said, has been discussed. There is something that is already in place. Did a next meeting, 18 Jan, we, we, we just moved it for today. So that, that was, those were the items that we went through during the last meeting. So any, any, anything that you would like to go to? I can't hear you, sir.
No, what I'm saying, for the points where we have to work, whenever we mention, we have to develop work master plan and so on.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Next board meeting, we can, we can propose something concrete.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, definitely. Yeah, next week we will, we will look at, look at those points. They are on agenda in any case. So we will take on. Okay, so I'll move, move back to the agenda now.
Yes.
Sorry, sharing it again. You go. Yeah, there we are. So I'll take the third point, announcement by president, contribution from members, Mr. Rajkumar.
Yes. As a contribution, see, there is no new contribution, new contribution in the last, you know, after that last meeting. It's only up to, you know, there are 22 contributions which we received so far. And the, the last one is Dr. AP's contribution of 10,000 rupees. And after that, there is no new addition.
Okay. Okay, announcement of completed ongoing activities, collaboration with IIT Madras. Dr. AP.
Yeah, this is going, well, we've signed, we've signed an MOU.
Yeah.
Now, once I start my activity, we'll make good use of it.
Okay. Report on activities.
Namakal, we've had some activities there. Well, we are working on a website for GRF India.
Okay, okay. Office space.
Office space.
Okay, so work in progress. Then we have book release. I think this is done. So I don't think, yeah, this is done.
Well.
Okay, yeah. Perkins Collaboration. I think myself and Professor Post Raman had, had a very good meeting with the team or with Perkins. It was during the week already. I have taken note, I think I can report on that, sir, because I was in the meeting and you were also there. So the Perkins Collaboration is, is underway. There are certain criterias and, and certain things that we will have to discuss in detail before we move ahead with, with the potential collaboration. But as it is, I think it is a very positive meeting that we had. Now it's just a question of, of putting the, the, the process in place to be able to, to collaborate with, with Perkins. I will, I will share details about the collaboration and the discussion we had and also the decision we taking in terms of the collaboration during the next meeting. Then there is the IIT MRP collaboration. I, we had the meeting this morning itself with, with Akila and Jash, Jashinda. I think it was a very good and useful meeting. You would agree, Professor Post Raman, it was a very fruitful meeting in the morning.
Yes.
The IIT MRP meeting. I think the highlight, the highlight of, of the meeting this morning was the potential for collaboration with IIT MRP in terms of the people with disabilities and the list, the potential list that they could share with us for be, for them to be able to have the, the on the groundwork to be done by NGOs like GRF. So I think this, this, this is something that we will need to elaborate on going ahead because I think it's, it's very interesting in terms of the list of people that they would share with us going ahead. And also, I mentioned during the meeting that for our working partners and our collaborators, SRM will play a very important role for the fact that there, there is the medical aspect of things that we would be able to share and we would be able to collaborate with them. So that they give their medical point of view and potentially we would be able to use that as the basis for evaluation in terms of which devices, which type of services, which type of health service they would require going ahead. So that was, that was one of the highlights. And then the second point was the, the potential collaboration with, with IIT MRP. And the other, other regions in Africa as well. But I think this is going to be through partners again. But I think this will be at a later stage if I'm, if I'm, if I'm correct, Mr. Post Raman.
You're right, yeah.
Yeah, excellent. So these were the two main points that, that we had in terms of discussion. Then we were looking at future action plans, strategic and operation plan for GRF India. I think it's open, open for, for discussion.
Yeah. We are going to prepare draft, Vijay, and submit next.
Okay.
IRISE going well.
Yeah, yeah, Pooja mentioned to me later this afternoon.
Yeah. We hope to be released in October.
Okay, excellent. MOU with worst trust and Pavai College.
We have to work on that.
Yeah, we have, we have to work, work on that. IRISE India, we already mentioned. Collaboration of GRF Mauritius and GRF India activities, holistic program by Dr. Sathapriya in special schools.
This is correct.
This is under, underway. Partnership with NGOs.
Yes, I'm trying, I'm tying up with a number of NGOs. I'll, I'll give a full brief next time, Vijay. I couldn't do it.
Okay. GRF YouTube channel, LinkedIn profile for GRF India.
Have we got that, Vijay, already? Can you check that?
I need to check. I will see with, with the communications department back there.
Then you can, you can take care of that yourself.
Yeah, I will, I will. Yes, yes, I will take care of that. Yes.
Yes.
Government department for differently able. I think it was, yeah. MOU sign with SRM ISD, Telenet in project. Yes, Dr. Kartikayan is there. We already had one process SOP discussion meeting couple of weeks back, I think. We are, we are working on now in terms of the, the how-to in terms of the, the contacts, the patients, breaking up the list, bringing up the list and also looking at the doctors that we have to be able to follow up. So in the, in the coming days, Dr. Kartikayan, you, we will, we will start sharing list and potential cases with, with, with you and your team. So we will, we will share those in the coming, in the coming days. Then we have fundraising. Yes, our other potential sponsors, 2012, 12P, all the trustees.
Yeah, I must say something on that. I've contacted Life Insurance Corporation of India and another company in India who work with me in Mauritius. They seem to say that we need government of India want to have, will give CSR, will approve CSR only for NGO who are. Is that correct, Bakta?
Sorry, I, I didn't hear very well what you said.
Yeah, sir. Yeah, sir. Regarding the corporate funding.
Yes.
We need to register in the corporate registration is there is another, very simple method only. We can do it also. We can get the certificate for that.
Ah, can you do that?
The home of ESR, we will do it.
Please, yes.
Yes, they will give you a number with the certificate for registration, registration, the corporate. So we can do it, we can do it. And regarding, regarding the fund available, they are supporting right now, the Vipro Post Foundation, you know that Ajim Prem C Foundation.
Yes.
They are also giving enough fund to NGOs for the correct proposals.
Okay.
And ONC, ONC also is there, right? Currently they are supporting many NGOs with a lot of fund.
Hmm.
And HCL, HCL.
HCL, yes.
Ah, HCL, they are also supporting NGOs and like us, our foundation, they are supporting. We need to, we, we need to, we need to find out the right representative or the person, contact person.
Yes.
So that we can, we can easily, we can get the support.
Okay, thank you very much, Pakta. That's very useful. Now that paper that we need from, from the company for approval, to submit to the companies, kindly work on that.
Yeah, yeah, we both, we will do it.
Yeah, you and Raj can do that.
Ah, Raj and myself, we will do it for corporate registration.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. And, and sorry, I, I missed a little bit earlier. What is, what is the institution where the application needs to be done?
Oh, that is, we, we, we need, we need to, oh, one signature, they have developed the e-signature for the trustee. Yeah, if it is required, then we, with the, the PAN code and other ATG totally support, we can apply and they will provide the corporate registration certificate.
Oh, that's it. Okay, 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 okay. Thank you, thank you.
Which is useful for CSR eligibility.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They, when, when we enter into the, the, any CSR, they will ask whether you have registered in the CSR, number is there available or not, they will ask.
Yeah, yes, very good. So if you can do that, Bakta, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, sure. We both, we will do it, sir.
Okay. Okay, number seven, I come to the next point, which is administration procedures, board appointment of AP as lifetime trustee of GRF India. I think this is what we were referring earlier. So just let me share, just let me share the document that I have in place here.
Yeah, yeah.
There we are. Okay, so I'll leave it to to Professor Post Raman and Mr. Rajkumar and Dr. Kartikayan and Mr. Bakta.
Let me, Vijay, let me say something on that.
Yes, please.
Rajkumar, I told, I told Prabhu, only to make me an official lifetime trustee with all you. I did not ask him to propose that I be there. Continue, Vijay, can you put it? That I be, that he give me the redesignation of the trustees and so on, that I become president, co-managing trustee of NGOs as trustee. No, 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 I, I was not, I, I don't need to be president. You know, I don't need to be president. I would like Raj to stay as president. I can probably be the managing trustee. You know, just to manage and to take action and contact, you know, that I, I would like Raj to stay as president.
Okay, okay, sir.
Raj, I prefer that. I'll be more comfortable with that.
Yeah, yes, sir. That's fine.
But I told him that he had to give me a status. There is to be a resolution confirming that I will lifetime trustee. Now there is no document for that. You know, therefore the resolution is there, then you, then I can get a letter for that or you know, when I. Is that okay?
Sir. Yep. Yes, Mr. Rajkumar.
Yes, sir, fine, sir.
I am a lifetime trustee. You have to talk to Prabhu, Rajkumar.
Yes, sir.
Talk to Prabhu.
Okay, no, no, your voice is not there.
Yeah, you're breaking up, sir. Yeah.
Saying properly, sir. I'm saying talk to Prabhu.
So the voice is breaking, not clear.
No, talk to Prabhu.
Okay, regarding.
And tell him that I would like you to be the, you stay as president.
Okay.
I am registered as a permanent trustee.
Okay.
And I can be the managing trustee, that's all.
Okay, sir. Okay, sir. You can, you can, just, can you please drop me a message so that he can understand better?
Yeah, Vijay.
Yes, sir.
Can you amend the resolution?
I can.
Yeah. Okay, sir, I can.
Rajkumar is the president. I, I'm becoming permanent trustee and also managing.
Yeah, no problem. We can do that.
I would prefer that.
We can, we can do that. Yeah, we can do that. No problem.
You can, Vijay, and can drop, you know, message so that.
You will send you the revise.
I will, I will send you. I'll send you the revise. Of course, yes, of course, I'll leave the legal, legal part to you, but I'll, I'll drop, I'll drop the, the details as required.
Yeah, amend it accordingly and then we'll send it to Rajkumar. We'll take it to Prabhu. Prabhu should then officially endorse that.
Yes.
Even if the trustees have to sign, you have to sign it.
Yep.
Now you have to sign. This is the resolution, no?
Yeah.
We, everyone, everyone in the trust, trust members and the managing trustee are required to sign. And what is done, we'll proceed with the sub-registered office.
Please, please, then, then it's okay. Then I'll get the.
We'll, we'll discuss with Prabhu about this, sir, and we'll do the need.
Yeah, now I'm comfortable with it.
Just, just, just as a question, do we need this resolution to be letter-headed or something like that? Or it can be, it can be plain paper like this?
Resolution should be, a resolution should be in lettered as well.
In letterhead.
We will, we will, we will drop this resolution into a, into a, you know, into a stamp paper here, you know, a stamp paper here.
Yeah, good.
And along with the, as a evidence, we'll take it with the lettered statement. Okay.
Do that and send to Rajkumar.
Yeah, sure. No problem. Yeah, no problem. Okay, so I'll come back to the agenda now. Right. So then we said, well, in terms of the next board meeting, maybe we can take that last statement, statement of accounts, Mr. Rajkumar.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, statement of accounts, I think, you know, since, you know, I don't have a, the statement with me at present, but the last statement is the latest one. There is no transaction after that.
Okay. Corporate funding, I think this is a point we mentioned earlier. Maybe we can elaborate on that. SBI Indian Oil, AP and Mr. Bakta.
Our approach.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's what I shared previously.
Okay, okay, okay. So I'll, I'll remove this one because we already taken that.
Yeah, we've taken that already. Yeah, Bakta will find the certificate eligibility for CSR.
Yep. Okay, excellent. So any other, any other points that probably I, we didn't cover within, within the agenda or you would like to mention?
Yes, Rajkumar.
You see, I want to, you know, I want to point out here, since we are discussing about that CSR and fundraising activity.
Yes.
I just, you know, mentioned to me, see, in the recent, I mean, recently, couple of weeks back, there was a advertisement, full page advertisement in the leading newspapers in India that found and the, the advertisement shows that Larson and Turbo, popularly known as LNT, is the largest construction company in India and one of the fine construction company in the world. They are doing the metro rail construction Mauritius. And they are, they are collaborating with the Mauritius government and Indian government propose LNT to do the metro work in Mauritius. So in, in, while doing the CSR activity, AP sir, Dr. AP sir has already mentioned that it was Indian Oil and LIC. Both are because they are doing, you know, work for Mauritius. They are in the contact and AP sir is trying, raising funds, you know, from the two regions. So the LNT is the third one and request, Dr. AP, you know, to find any source to generate funds from Indian LNT. You know, AP sir is living Mauritius later this week. And I, I just for request sir to, you know, find out any, you know, contacts, you know, to get funds from LNT because LNT doing a lot of CSR activity with the different NGOs. I would like to be GRF India as one among them. So, so that is one of the action item for AP, sir. Are you hearing, sir?
Yes.
Yeah.
Congratulate Rajkumar going to meeting many ambassadors. When he goes to the governor and goes to other official reception. And this is good. This is the networking will help. Then we'll have to talk to those people to support our foundation, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
And we will, we'll do that when I.
Thank you. Well, I'm, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'm finding, you know, and trying to getting appointment, you know, from ambassadors and one by one. First, I have sent a mail to the External Affairs Ministry. There is an Indian Foreign Service Officer who is taking care of the embassy people's protocols from Chennai. I'm, you know, I already sent an email to get an appointment. And I will, going forward, I'm trying to get one by one and one by one and to establish the, you know, contacts.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Vijay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We love to work on project writer for India, love to do Hope Initiative, plus project writer. Love to work on that, you know, so that, that could, that could be, that would help us to submit projects.
Yep.
I just want to mention, there was one case we managed to do, one amputee from Madurai. You must have seen on our page.
Yeah.
A Facebook page, one amputee, Palanis Rong from Madurai, who was amputated. A Facebook page, one amputee, Palaniswami from Madurai, who was amputated above me, was referred. And I.
We can't, we can't hear you.
I, I'm saying there was a, there was a an amputee, an amputee. An amputee, Mister Palaniswami. Was referred to me by Marudu Mohan, Dr. Marudu Mohan. Marudu, Maru, Du Mohan. H N. Marudu Mohan. And I got our partner Eldham's Orthopedic Center offered a limbs to that person. And he is very happy. So that was one thing JRF India could do, okay?
Yeah.
So like that, we are going to do more, more work, more support. We're going now that I've, I will be able to concentrate more on this.
Yep.
I think we've covered the ground, Vijay.
Yep, anything, everyone around table, Dr. Kartikayan, if you have anything, Mister Rajkumar. Mister Bhakta. Yeah.
Yeah, I I'll, I'll, with, yeah, everything is fine from my side. Doctor AP, I want to congratulate AP sir, you know, for the book launch.
Thank you.
Book launch in Chennai in a very grand manner and the Member of Parliament, Mister Abdullah and the Minister, Mister Mastan, everyone praised AP sir, you know, about his hard work and dedicated service for the, towards the people and the social work activities. I'm really proud, you know, proud that working with AP sir.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Okay, sir. And.
And thank you for being a good ambassador of promoting the books.
In fact, he is giving your, our book to many people visiting in our office.
Yeah.
And C W S, C W S also, he's presenting to, to the V I Ps.
Okay.
Especially Social Defense Secretary and ministers, all those people is distributing that. So it's a good thing. And, and Vijay, the first, first copy given to the Honorable Supreme Court Justice.
Yeah, that was great, that was great.
Excellent, excellent.
The top court of India.
Yes, I have put that on our page.
Yeah.
Great, great.
Excellent, thank you very much, everyone. So we'll, we'll close the meeting here, I'll share the notes on meeting during the coming days and also the, the document that I missed the last time. Plus, we will work on, on a few things when Mr. AP is back in Mauritius here next week. So there are quite a few things on the agenda to work on, so we will concentrate on those things. Thank you very much, everyone, we'll keep in touch and until next time.
Before, before the, before the, one sec.
Yes, I'm feeling.
See, we have to sign a resolution, you have a resolution, you know, the, the part, the solution passed now. It has to be signed by all the members and I told in the, I know, Dr. Kartikayan and Mister Bhakta. And so we have to find out, you know, once a resolution has been come down and it has been signed, the hot copy. It has been presented to the sub director office.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Take care, see you.
Yeah, please, please.